I will call on my good colleague from Greenwich, Senator Kasser.
Good morning, Chairwoman Porter and Kushner and esteemed members of the Labor Committee. I'm Senator Alex Kasser and I urge you to support SB 141 to protect firefighters who risk their lives every day to protect us. Because of their work, firefighters are routinely exposed to toxic fumes and poisonous gases, and therefore they're at much higher risk of contracting cancer at a younger age. This bill recognizes that those who help us in crisis situations deserve our help too. Now, 35 other states have this law and I hope we become the next. Today, you'll hear from firefighters and family members, but first, I want to establish the science on this issue by introducing one of the world's leading scientists, Dr. Philip Landrigan. He's a physician, an epidemiologist, and an expert on the effects of chemical exposures. He's led dozens of research studies and was the lead scientist for first responders at the World Trade Center on 9/11. For more than 50 years, Dr. Landrigan has been a champion for children and vulnerable populations, and it's truly an honor to have him here with us today. So, I will cede my time to Dr. Landrigan.
Good morning. Thank you, Senator Kasser, Madam Chairman. Good morning. I'm Philip Landrigan. As Senator Kasser said, I'm a physician. I'm trained in pediatrics, preventive medicine, and occupational medicine. For 33 years, I ran the Department of Preventive Medicine at Mount Sinai Medical School in New York, where I was responsible for overseeing the medical care provided to 22,000 9/11 first responders, many of them firefighters, and some of those firefighters from Connecticut. I'm now the Director of the Program in Global Public Health and the Common Good at Boston College. So, I think this bill, SB 141, that will make cancer a presumptive line-of-duty illness in eligible Connecticut firefighters is very important. It will provide these brave men and women with workers' compensation benefits, other benefits such as death benefits, should they contract cancer. Let me expand on the opening remarks that Senator Kasser provided and tell you why I believe that this bill is very well justified medically and scientifically. First of all, it is well established by multiple studies that firefighters have excess risk of cancer, increased incidence, increased mortality from a number of different cancers compared to the general population of the United States and the general population of Connecticut, and they develop these cancers at younger agers than the general population. Why is this so? Well, firefighters get cancer because in the fire environment, they are exposed to a whole series of carcinogens. Some of these are ancient chemicals like black soot, which has been in fire environments since time immemorial and causes lung cancer, skin cancer, bladder cancer. But in the modern fire environment, where buildings have plastics and synthetic chemicals in abundance, when those chemicals heat, when they burn, they release a whole range of toxic and proven human carcinogens to which firefighters are exposed. So, for example, when polyvinyl chloride pipes burn, they release hydrochloric acid, which burns the respiratory tract. They release vinyl chloride gas, which is a potent carcinogen, causes liver cancer and brain cancer. It releases dioxins, which cause cancers in many organs. Many older buildings in Connecticut still contain asbestos. It hasn't been put in buildings de novo since the 1970s, but thousands of buildings still have asbestos. The asbestos, of course, does not burn when the fire burns. It remains behind in the ashes, and when the firefighters come in at the end of the fire and do what they call the overhaul, where they go through the ashes looking for residual embers, that asbestos can kick up and they can inhale it. When I was at Mount Sinai in New York, we did an X-ray survey of New York City firefighters. We found that a high proportion of them had changes in their lung X-rays that reflected asbestos exposure. Firefighters are exposed to benzene, known to cause leukemia, known to cause lymphoma. They're exposed to formaldehyde, causes leukemia and nasal cancer. They're exposed to parafluorinated compounds, PFOA, PFOS, in firefighting foams, and those chemicals cause a number of cancers. They can also cause, in the case of women firefighters, they can cause damage to the unborn child in the mother's womb. In addition to those known carcinogens, firefighters are exposed to thousands of chemicals whose toxicity has never been properly tested. Eighty percent of the chemicals on the American market have never been tested for safety or toxicity, and when those chemicals burn, they throw off innumerable toxic and potentially carcinogenic compounds, more than can be counted. And yet, when firefighters go into a fire environment, they don't know what's burning. They don't know what chemicals they're exposed to. They simply go in, they do their duty, they save lives, they save property. And that's why I believe it's very important, since we can't fully protect firefighters against chemical carcinogens in the fire environment. In fact, we don't even know the chemical nature of all those carcinogens. It's important to put in place a safety net that affords workers' compensation and other benefits to firefighters if they develop cancer. So, in conclusion, two big points. Firefighters suffer excess rates of cancer compared to the general population. Secondly, firefighters sustain myriad occupational exposures to proven chemical carcinogens, as well as to thousands of chemicals whose hazard is not yet known but are suspected to cause cancer. And it's for these reasons I believe it's reasonable and medically justified, scientifically justified, to make cancer a presumptive disease in firefighters and to provide firefighters who develop cancer with appropriate benefits. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Landrigan, and also Senator Kasser. I will go to committee members now for questions or comments. So, we have, I see one hand now, hold on. Representative Ruttigliano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Doctor. I'm just going to chime in real quick because I'm a little confused. I'm trying to read through some of the testimony. I have a phone call into a couple of lobbyists, the firefighter lobbyists. I spent an entire year, a few years back, on a firefighter cancer task force. We came up with a bipartisan agreement with Representative Cook, Senator Meyer, myself, and a bunch of other people, the unions, everybody was in the same room, and we came up with a plan to afford firefighters who can get workers' compensation, but wage replacement for the time and effort on their way to getting a worker's compensation judgment and all that other stuff. So, I'm a little confused about the bill. I don't know what we missed a few years ago that passed near unanimously in both houses, that the wage replacement monies are controlled by the firefighters themselves. They dole them out to their own members who need the money for when a firefighter's on their way to a doctor's appointment, or anything that workers' comp didn't cover. The money was there and the firefighters were in charge of it. So, I don't know, sir, if you're aware of the bill, or if you could just speak to the deficiencies, something that we didn't cover?
Thank you, Representative. I am not aware of the other bill. I was asked to comment on the scientific basis, the medical basis for affording workers' compensation benefits to firefighters, which is something I understand is common practice in more than 30 other states across the United States. But I don't live in Connecticut and I'm not aware of that bill.
I couldn't agree with you more, and we heard lots of testimony about the dangers that all firefighters, you know, put themselves in on our behalf. I just, I really, I'm happy to talk about this offline. I don't want to take up too much time in the committee meeting. It was a great bill that we, a lot of people, supported. There was a lot of work done on it, and I felt at the time, we filled the gaps, because there was a gap, and we filled the gaps, and we did it in a creative way. We did it so that sort of there was like a private solution. We even came up with a way to fund it, so that the firemen and the professional firefighters and the volunteer firefighters could all, you know, access their own money and they can control it themselves. We sort of empowered them to help each other. So, I thought it was a pretty good idea. I'd be happy to talk to you about it another time, offline. I know we have limits on speaking today, so I'll just leave it at that. I was just hoping somebody could tell me, where's the gap?
Representative Ruttigliano, let me try and chair this meeting by suggesting that, while Dr. Landrigan may not be able to answer that, I would like to ask Senator Kasser if she might be able to answer it. But before I call on her, I do want to point out also, we will have on our speakers list today, a representative of the firefighters' union, and I suspect that he was very much engaged in those conversations as well. So, I think we'll have an opportunity to get at your question, Representative Ruttigliano. And let me ask Senator Kasser if she has any knowledge of this and could help us out here.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Kushner, yes. So, Representative Ruttigliano, you are correct that a few years ago, a bill did pass and it established the Firefighters' Cancer Relief Fund. However, there was a severe limitation on that bill, which is that firefighters can only apply for wage replacement benefits. They cannot also apply for, or they're not also eligible for workers' comp. So, it was one step in the right direction, but not a complete solution by any means. So, you'll hear from firefighters today, Connecticut firefighters, who were not able to get the health benefits and the workers' comp, and you'll even hear from a widow who wasn't able to get death benefits, medical coverage for her children and her family because of the limitations of that prior law. So, we're trying to extend what was a good first step. We're trying to extend it to become a truly comprehensive solution.
Thank you, Senator Kushner, Madam Chair, and members of the Labor Committee. I'm here today to fully support proposed Bill Number 141. My husband was New Britain firefighter Scott Johnson, and the father to our three sons, Zachary, who's 13, and our twins that are age nine, Benjamin and Jacob. From the time that my husband was a young child, all he ever wanted to do was be a firefighter. That dream became his reality when he became part of Recruit Class 40 in 2007. But ultimately, it was this same dream that took his life on August 16th of 2017 at the age of 43. I'm sorry. Scott was diagnosed with stage IV colorectal cancer in April of 2015, and during the course of my husband's illness, I stood by his side. I supported him, and what was his voice on the days when he wasn't able to speak, because he was too weak to do so. And that's exactly why I'm here today. I'm here to advocate and speak on his behalf, and on behalf of so many others that are currently fighting or have succumbed to this battle. I don't like to use the phrase "lost his battle," because in my eyes, someone who fights long and hard the way that my husband did, they didn't lose anything. New Britain lost, the New Britain Fire Department lost a friend and a brother, but this state lost something greater. They lost a hero. It's been almost six years, and I still ask myself every day, why? Why am I a widow at the age of 41, and why do my boys no longer have their father? This has not been an easy road, but I think the answer is quite simple. The men and women of this profession are expected to run into these burning buildings and save lives, but what happens to them when they get sick? Carcinogens are not just inhaled, but they are absorbed through the skin, and this is a profession that must be far more respected and not taken for granted, as these men and women put their lives and their health on the line for us. Connecticut, in my opinion, has dropped the ball when it comes to protecting its firefighters. How is it that when someone gets the news that they have cancer, they are told that they need to use all of their sick time, their vacation time, and their paid holidays, because workers' compensation does not recognize that cancer is a work-related illness? Someone who gets a diagnosis such as this should not worry about how they're going to pay their bills, but focus solely on how they're going to fight to beat this disease, to live to see another day. For those who will succumb to this work-related illness, much like my husband did, it goes without saying that any firefighter who gets cancer while on this job should be considered a line-of-duty death. Scott's not the first, nor will he be the last to die from cancer on the job. His death never made sense to me. It's never going to, until today. I know that his purpose here on earth was not just to be a good husband and father and friend, but he's here today to pave the way so that others will never have to endure what my family has endured. This bill is personal. It's hugely personal to me, and it's hugely personal to my family, his friends, and the department. I'm hoping today that you will do right by these brave men, women, and their families and pass this bill. Pass Bill 141. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. And first of all, I just want to say how sorry we are for your loss and the loss, as you mentioned, to the state and to all of our communities. And, you know, we are aware of how serious this condition is. I have some questions, but I'll wait until I hear from Representative Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will leave the questions to you, because I'm sure we're on the same accord there. Mrs. Johnson, I really did just want to thank you for being here today. Thank you for the service of your husband, my condolences to you and your boy. And this is really an effort for us to do exactly what you're petitioning today. You don't get to call them heroes and then don't treat them like heroes. And I have to give that accolade to Senator George Cabrera, because he nailed it one day in a conversation, and it has resonated with me everything. We don't get to call them heroes and not treat them as such. But thank you so much for the courage to come before us and share a painful, painful story. And I'm so sorry that that is the way it went, but I'm very grateful for his service and very grateful for you being here today.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I don't know if you've been listening before you got on to speak, but we did have some questions raised about an earlier bill that was passed that created a cancer fund. And as I understand your testimony, that while there was some compensation from the cancer fund, there were many things that were not covered. And I wondered if you would just go over those from, because I think we'll hear from others who were involved in the negotiations around that bill, but it's helpful to us to know what you, you know, from your experience, what you received from the cancer fund that did not receive from, because it wasn't qualified under workers' comp.
Okay, so, for the city, for the city of New Britain, we did not get, the men and women on the department pooled their time, because workers' compensation wasn't offered to him. So, they pooled their time so that he go and get chemo, and he could get radiation, and he could travel. You know, and after he passed, my sons and I are on the Husky Plan. You know, we're on the Connecticut Plan, because he didn't die, in the state's eyes, in the line of duty. So, because he's not a line-of-duty death, don't get benefits like that. We don't get additional healthcare coverage. He's not recognized. He's not recognized on the wall in South Windsor. He's not recognized even in the city of New Britain, because he's not, cancer is not a line-of-duty death. And I don't understand. I don't understand why that is. So, for myself and for our boys, and even for Scott, the stress of him traveling and, you know, pushing to go to work, vomiting while he was at work, being lethargic, but yet still pushing himself to work because he knew that he had to, is not something that, or any family should have to go through. You know, you're fighting. You're fighting for your life, and like I said, nobody should be put in that position where they're felt, they feel that they are not going to be able to provide for their family.
Thank you. I know that it has been brought to our attention by an earlier witness that there were no death benefits through, workers' comp has a very limited death benefit. At this time, it's only $4,000, which, if I could see change, but nonetheless, as I understand it, your family did not, also did not receive that death benefit?
No.
Well, I heard from earlier folks on this, in this hearing, that there would be an openness to reopen those discussions and negotiations regarding the cancer fund that was created and other alternatives that may be necessary. And I just want you to know that we really appreciate you testifying here today. I know that was hard for you, but you did it out of love for your husband and for the cause, and so we really appreciate that. And it will help inform us to make good decisions about this bill and the needs of firefighters going forward. So, I really appreciate you pushing through your sadness and sharing with us. Thank you.
I appreciate you taking the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, next.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chairwoman, Representative Porter and Senator Kushner, and the members of the Labor and Public Employees Committee. I'm Lieutenant David Williamson, Local 786, Stanford Fire Department. In 2007, I was diagnosed with testicular cancer. That very same week, another firefighter, not only in my department, in my firehouse, in my group, my very same shift, was diagnosed with the same testicular cancer. Two of us, same firehouse, same week. We're both told it's not job-related. To date, in my 22 years down there, I've worked with eight firefighters who have come down with various types of cancers from my firehouse alone. There's nine firehouses in the city of Stanford. At the time of my diagnosis, I had three boys. There were seven, five, and three. The effects of this diagnosis was earth-shattering. My wife had to take unpaid leave to take care of three boys and a husband who was battling for his life. They had surgery to remove the cancerous testicle and had to go through four rounds of chemotherapy. Most people don't understand chemotherapy. Chemotherapy isn't getting a shot or taking a pill. My chemotherapy was 40 hours a week, for a week on, two weeks off, so that my body could recover and the chemo didn't kill me. I did this four times. First round wasn't too bad. I was healthy. Second round knocked me down a little bit, a little bit harder, no appetite, nausea, could barely walk. Round three almost killed me. So, I had blood clots in my veins. They had collapsed at this point. I had to have a pick line put in. Round four, I don't remember a lot of it. I just know that I was told I suffered a lot of hallucinations, needed a wheelchair to get around. December 31st, I completed my treatment. I'd lost 50% of my muscle mass, 70% of my stamina. Financially, we were ruined. My wife taking an unpaid leave, with $70,000 of lost income. My salary owned down to straight sick time, and the other costs of co-pays, prescriptions, medicines that weren't covered by insurance. Going to the gym to rehabilitate so that I could return to work as a fireman, getting a personal trainer, none of that was ever covered at any of it. Trying to maintain our mortgage, cover our bills, feed our children. It was crazy. Here's the scary thought. I survived. I'm one of the fortunate ones. The ones that didn't survive it, they're left high and dry. I wasn't vested in my pension. I wouldn't have gotten, my family wouldn't have gotten medical. They wouldn't have gotten an income. Most importantly, they wouldn't have had me. Workers' comp, trying to prove what I was exposed to and when is next to impossible. We're exposed to things on a daily basis. We go into a fire of overcooked food, where somebody left a pan on the stove. We're exposed to the toxins from what the pan's made out of, the Teflon, all that stuff, all the firefighting stuff, the PFFSAs that are in our firefighter gear that turns out to be a cancer-causing chemical, all this stuff. Trying to fight while you're fighting for your life to get covered, it just doesn't happen. No? So, every day, myself and my family, we have to wonder, is this going to come back?
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Three minutes have expired. Please conclude your remarks.
Okay. This bill that would ensure the men and women who put their lives on the line to protect the life, property, and the environment for the state of Connecticut and their families get the protection they deserve by making sure that we are covered 100%. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lieutenant Williamson. And first of all, I mean, it's hard to hear your story and what you went through, but we are happy that you're still here and still fighting and still representing and working for the people of Connecticut and your community. And so, we really appreciate you being here and sharing this story. I think this is the kind of information we need to understand the compromise that's been discussed previously and what was attempted to do to help firefighters who are battling cancer, and also to know what we need to do to make sure that it's working. So, we really appreciate your testimony. I see a hand here, so I will call on Representative Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, firefighter Williamson. Just wanted to echo the sentiments that were expressed by my co-chair, and just so very happy that you are still here with us, and to thank you for your service, because I have family members that have gone through the same thing you have as a firefighter, and they're not here today. So, I just want you to know how much it means to have you, the one that has survived, sitting before us, sharing your testimony. And again, I thank you, I really do, for the service that you give to the state and the sacrifices that you make day in and day out. And we really are looking to rectify this for all of you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much for your support. It means a lot to us out there on the front lines.
Well, you know, I think what you do means a lot to us, and you've heard it before, Representative Porter said it as well, that, you know, during this recent crisis, the pandemic, there have been a lot of families and a lot of us in the community that have put up signs thanking our first responders, thanking our educators, thanking our heroes, you know, nursing home workers, and we feel some responsibility to make those words real for you and your colleagues, because it's thanking you is important, recognizing you is important, but also making sure that we're taking care of you as you're taking care of us is really important as well. So, we appreciate it.
Somebody had brought up about the cost of this before, and the cost of this to us is our lives. That's basically what it comes down to. It comes down to our lives. That's what we're willing to put up.
And there's no words we can say that really can capture our appreciation for that, and it's good for us to all hear this testimony and be reminded. We have on the call again Caroline Johnson, whose husband was a firefighter in New Britain who passed because of cancer, and her testimony was very, very moving. And I think, you know, I know both sides of the aisle, all the people that participated. I know Representative Ruttigliano, who's been a member of the committee, mentioned others that also worked on that compromise that created a cancer fund. And I know that we all, regardless of party, care about our firefighters and our first responders and want to do right by you. And so, being here today serves a great purpose, because we will have the opportunity to have more conversations about this to meeting committee about it, and hope to address the concerns that you've raised in the most effective way. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I see no further hands, so I am going to ask if Caroline can come back on screen now on camera. And Caroline Johnson, we do have Representative Aurora here now to ask this question. I wanted to say before either one of you says anything, I didn't intend to overlook your hand, Representative Aurora. I find it hard sometimes to manage everything that's going on here, and I can't tell you, Ms. Johnson, how appreciative we are that you could come back so that Representative Aurora could ask his question. So, go ahead, Representative.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I had raised it at the last, you know, last five seconds or 10 seconds, so I understand why you might have missed it. That's, you know, I understand that. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your testimony. I just wanted to offer my condolences, as well as the appreciation for your courage for coming up and testifying. You know, I can, listening to you was hard and moving, but at the same time, I cannot even understand, you know, how you might be, you know, I can't put, if I put myself in your shoes, I feel afraid. So, I strongly appreciate your courage and thank you for being here. So I strongly appreciate your courage and thank you for being here, for giving us the perspective and those insights. I didn't have any question. I just meant to offer my comment here. Thank you.
With all due respect, though, I'm not the one that's courageous or brave. It's the men and women out there that are courageous and brave. They're the heroes. It's not me, but I appreciate it.
No, you are very humble, and I do agree with you as well, that they are very brave, but so are you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I wanted to try and make it right. So Caroline, I appreciate you coming back. I didn't know if it was a question or a comment or a thanks. But, you know, we're gonna get this right, and we're working very hard to make sure that the public is heard and that you have every opportunity to get asked a question. So thank you so much for coming back.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chairwomen, Senator Kushner, Representative Porter, ranking members, Representative Aurora, Senator Sampson, and the other members of the Labor and Public Employees Committee. My name is Rick Hart. I represent the Uniformed Professional Firefighters, which is an organization that represents 4,000 career firefighters across the state of Connecticut. I'm here to speak in favor of three pieces of legislation. The first two, Senate Bill 665 and Senate Bill 666, that would include DOC, EMF, and dispatchers into the PTSI statute that we passed in 2019. We support these based upon the deal and agreement that we made back in 2019. We want to stand by our word and support those two initiatives. The second bill that, or the third bill, I'm sorry, that I am here to mostly testify in favor of is Senate Bill 141, which would place firefighter cancer coverage into workers' comp. You've heard some pretty compelling testimony as to why Public Act 16-10 needs to be amended. The wage replacement was a first step, a good first step in providing coverage for members that were out of sick time, out of vacation time, out of leave time in order to go get treatment for cancer. But as you've heard, it doesn't address if someone passes or if someone has to retire as a result of their debilitating illness. I'm also a deputy chief in the Waterbury Fire Department, and we have a number of members that have been diagnosed with cancer. You have testimony from firefighter Todd Newguy, who has 22 years on the Waterbury Fire Department, and he may not make 25 years, which would qualify him for a pension. He may pass. It's a distinct possibility. He's got stage IV colon cancer that metes to his lung and to his liver. He has a tumor on his liver that is growing exponentially, and surgery is not an option because he's got two other tumors that would grow if he had to go off chemotherapy and have surgery. So right now, today, he's in a radiological oncologist's office, mapping out his treatment. If he passes before 25 years, his wife and two daughters get nothing. That's zero benefits, no health care, as you heard from Caroline in her testimony. That is wrong. That is what has to be changed. Health care has to be carried on. Pensions have to be paid out. He's been paying into his pension. We all been paying into our pension. This has to be changed in order to provide for the families of the firefighters that pay the ultimate sacrifice and die as a result of work-related cancer. Dr. Landrigan gave extremely compelling scientific evidence and testimony that can't be refuted. Thirty-five other states have presumptive coverage for their firefighters. In this day and age where Connecticut's supposed to lead the way as a progressive state that takes care of its workers, it's shameful that we don't protect those that protect us. So with that, I'm more than happy to take any questions and please pass these three bills that are important to our first responders.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. I do, there has been previous testimony here today, and some questions have been asked about the compromise that was made for the Cancer Fund. And I don't know, were you a part of those conversations?
Yes, I was. I sat at the table, and I have to say first and foremost that it was very good. Representative Tigliano was there, Senator, from both sides of the aisles. Senator Wong was a member of the committee as well. And I have to say, I have a lot of respect for First Selectman Rudy Marconi, but I take extreme offense when he made the statement, you know, the cost to the municipality, what's the cost to the municipality? Caroline Johnson doesn't have a husband. What's the cost of that? That is the issue that has to be addressed. The wage replacement was a compromise because it was claimed that the workers' comp cost would be so astronomical, it would not be affordable. That's not true. You have the small cases that have been, that firefighters are dying. Yes, they should be paid out. If the federal government can cover the workers at Ground Zero that are dying daily, I don't see why we can't cover our firefighters. The compromise provided wage replacement, as I said. But there's a caveat in Section 4, Paragraph D of Public Act 16-10. Firefighters that applied for the wage replacement are precluded from concurrently collecting workers' compensation benefits. So you gotta flip a coin. Do I take a chance that Workers' Comp Commission is going to accept the claim and pay out my claim? Or do I take the chance and take the wage replacement? There are only four cancers covered in the current statute under workers' comp, and it's extremely difficult. Hopefully, the science will catch up to provide coverage. So that is our ask, that we place this into workers' comp so that all these employees are made whole.
Thank you for that explanation. I do, I know that was suggested here, I believe, during First Selectman Marconi's time with us, that perhaps we need to revisit the compromise and tweak it and fix it a bit. And, you know, I think that a lot of us probably, you know, heard that from him and thought, maybe that's a better approach. Could you just give us your thoughts on that?
Yeah, we've, the Uniformed Professional Firefighters have a history of sitting down with both sides of the aisle. We did that with, you know, with the cancer bill in 16. And we did it in 2019 when we formed the coalition with CCM and other stakeholders to pass the, to draft the PTSD, PTSI language. I can't, I can't speak for my, I have an idea that our president would be amenable to sitting down and having discussions. But granted, it's, this is gonna be a difficult lift because of COVID and all these meetings being held on Zoom. We have people that need this coverage now. And we would like, if we are gonna have conversation, we'd need to have them expedited so that this bill could move forward and be passed out and signed by the governor.
Thank you. Well, I think that we, when we heard from some of the firefighters here and from Caroline today, that was very compelling. And, you know, we certainly understand the difficulties. I wasn't a part of those negotiations to reach this compromised Cancer Fund. And I know how hard it is to reach agreements like that. So I appreciate everyone's efforts then, and I don't know, were these, were these, maybe the question to ask is, were some of these problems anticipated and discussed back then?
Well, as you know, Senator, negotiations, when an agreement is struck, when both sides aren't happy, that's a good agreement. We knew that there were shortfalls, but we wanted to play it out, see how it went, see how it's working. There's still logistical issues as far as accessing the fund. Governor Malloy swept the fund. We did put language in there that it was a non-lapsing fund, but they swept it anyway. Representative Cook is working with the governor's office and OPM to get that money reinstated. Governor Lamont has funded it last year and this year. It's in this year's budget as well. And so it's difficult. It's difficult because that money can disappear. And the issue is, when there's a, the $800,000, I believe, that's in there now, if there's $799,000 that have been, that's been expended and another member goes to access the fund, they're out of luck. They get nothing because it's within available appropriations. So that's one of the shortfalls as well.
Representative Tigliano, I hear you're just being lit up for a moment, and you're unmuted.
Listen, I have a, I have a good relationship with Rick. I have the utmost respect for every firefighter. You know, that, we did the math and the calculations on, I don't want to relitigate that entire bill. I don't know if this is the forum for that, so I'm hesitant to use up the committee's time discussing maybe what I might have a disagreement with Mr. Hart. That bill was, it was supposed to be $260,000 to start. We did the calculation on what could be put out. We did past experiences. The fact that it's up to $800,000 is great. We got Republicans to essentially agree to a tax increase, the fund thing, through the E911 fee that later maybe called into question, and then we supported funding it later. The fact that the governor or somebody would sweep it is outrageous. I couldn't agree more. But I, pardon me, Madam Chair, I just, I didn't think that this is what this room was like years ago. We went through everything. We had, everybody was at the table. We did all the math we were supposed to do. We thought we had the numbers right for it. The fact that it has $800,000 in it means that, you know, it's growing and people aren't using it, but that's a good thing because that means there weren't people who are sick that needed the money. If it was running out of money, that would mean we'd have an awful lot of sick firefighters and nobody was looking for that. Anyway, I'll stop there. I'm happy, if invited, to talk with Rick or anybody about this issue, especially Representative Cook, who I thought was fantastic and did a great job, and Senator Miner, anytime, anywhere, and including the chairs, Senator, I'm sure you want to be involved, and Representative Porter, anybody else, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Tigliano. And I do think, hold on one second, Rick. I did want to ask a question and then I'll let you respond to that, but I did want to also, I think that Representative Tigliano's suggestion is a good one, and we should have a conversation offline in a small group to really fully understand and look at what can be done best to move forward. But I guess one of my questions, aside from the amount of money that's in the fund, and what I have heard from the testimony today and from your own testimony, is that that the limitation of wage replacement doesn't really provide for families when the person unfortunately doesn't make it and is deceased. And that being one of the biggest areas of concern because of, because of the need for ongoing medical insurance for the families, it was devastating to hear from Caroline that her family's on Husky B. I mean, that's just, doesn't seem right to me when her husband served, you know, so long. And so from what I heard is that there are problems, not just with the amount of money in the fund, but, or maybe that isn't even the chief problem. The problem is more about things that are not, because they're not in the workers' comp system, they're not getting as a result of this. And am I accurate about that, Rick?
Yeah, and just as a point of clarification, the Cancer Relief Fund went live July 1 of 2019. That's when it was able to be accessed. And the, there's been an issue with exposure forms and documentation that we put into the statute to further make the case that, you know, that to prevent fraud, prevent people from accessing the fund that do not deserve it. And so there are different parameters within the statute that addresses that. And so that's why the fund is where it's at now. And as far as the benefits, the postmortem benefits, those are, that's what the issue we would like to get changed or get fixed because people are being left with nothing.
Oh, Madam Chair, I can just interject. Rick, I didn't know, it's sad that it took that many years for that to go live, but the beauty of that fund was that it was a firefighter fund run by firefighters for firefighters. We thought, wouldn't it be great to get the government sort of out of it and let you folks who know your profession better than anybody handle the money? And I don't know if we contemplated what happens if somebody passes away. I don't remember. But you know what? You may have a point, and it might be worth discussing, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think this has been really helpful, and thank you, Representative Tigliano, for that clarification as well. And I don't see any other hands, so I think we are ready to move on to our next person on the list. And I appreciate you having been here, Rick, today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chairperson and committee members. I'm here to speak in support of SB 141, Protection of Firefighters' Health. My name is Bruce Swagener. I'm a lieutenant in the Stanford Fire Department, where I've been employed for 25 years. You have my time as a volunteer firefighter. I have a total of over 39 years in the fire service. On behalf of all of us, I'd like to thank Caroline Johnson for her testimony, her undeniable strength in what she has done and continues to do for our cause. Five years ago, after a sudden jump in my PSA blood test and then a number of follow-up tests, I was diagnosed with an aggressive stage of prostate cancer. Receiving the phone call from my doctor informing that I had cancer is something I will never forget. Telling my family was far worse. Facing loved ones and telling them you have cancer and the motions and fears that followed was difficult. Going to work your next shift and telling your brother firefighters and then trying to function normally for the remaining shifts before your surgery was also tough. Most of my friends found out by emails. I just couldn't face anybody with the news anymore. Although I don't consider anything about cancer as lucky, I consider myself one of the lucky ones. I'm still here and, for the most part, living a normal life. I do have a lifelong physical issue as a result of my surgery, but I'm here to tell my story, and I'm still on the job. My cancer is basically able to be cured with surgery. All I needed was time and recovery and to retrain my system, do some of the physical aspects of prostate, I'm sorry, prostate removal. Up to this point in my family history, there was no cancer. My parents are currently 89. My siblings are eight and 10 years older than me. Fortunately, no cancer. My grandfathers lived into their 80s. My grandmothers each reached 100 years old before their deaths. I'm lucky enough to have good health and never had any major health issues until that dreaded day. I was 51 when diagnosed with prostate cancer, statistically in the low age group spectrum for that type of cancer. These are some of the factors why I feel so strongly that my years of firefighting have a direct correlation with my cancer diagnosis. I also work at Station 5, mentioned in earlier testimony by Lieutenant Dave Williamson, where we've had an unusual high amount of cancer diagnosis. My recovery time from surgery was 10 weeks. I was able to recover at home with help from my family and a couple of close friends. While recovering, I couldn't wait to get back to work, which is strange considering firefighting is the likely cause of my cancer, but this is what we do. I filed for workers' comp, having no doubt it would be quickly denied, and it was. It would be up to me to provide irrefutable proof that my job-related exposures had caused my cancer. After all I'd been through, I didn't have the mental capacity or finances to consider taking on this fight, which would have been a losing battle. I'm left with physical damages that affect me every day as well as the fear that my exposures will trigger yet another form of cancer in the future. Firefighter cancer has become so prevalent and recognized across the country that many departments, including my own, have implemented new policies in an effort to try to reduce our exposures to the carcinogens. My department has implemented new decontamination policies immediately following a fire. This ranch isn't being hosed off. The special wet wipes we've been administered to wipe off your skin prior to returning to the station and showering. We currently have to bring our contaminated gear and equipment into the apparatus with us, which is an ideal, but hopefully that'll change in the future. We've been issued a second set of turnout gear so we can get back into service with a clean set while our dirty set is being washed. This is a small example of some of the efforts in place to fight this, however, for a lot of this, it is likely too late. On behalf of my brother and sister firefighters, especially whose cancer situation is as unfortunate as mine, please support SB one, forty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for being here. I worked for a while in Stanford with the city employees of Stanford and worked with their union. It was a great honor to work with the folks in Stanford, so really appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
I I I you began to address something that I was thinking about. I also serve on the Environment Committee, and I know there we've been talking about firefighting foam, PFAS, and the firefighting foam and the need to address that. And I know that you you said in your testimony that there are procedures you're taking now to try and reduce and mitigate exposure. But of course, you know, that's very, very difficult to do in in the case of your employment. I wonder if there are other things that you've considered that you've thought of that we could be doing as a state to to address the contaminants that you're exposed to.
You know, that's tough. There's been a lot of talk recently about our protective gear. I think it was mentioned earlier. You know, it looks like that are in the process of manufacturing our gear and some of the protectants in our gear is known, I guess, they utilize known carcinogens. So we're technically being exposed to these carcinogens every time we put on the gear that we have to protect us from the fire. That's lately becoming a really, really strong subject, and that's something that's going to need to be addressed. We're going to need protection from that. I believe the international is heavily involved in that now. That's one example.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And and we have heard extensive testimony. We heard from Rick Hart just a few minutes ago about the sort of some of the problems with the compromise that was reached. I don't think they were anticipated. I don't think they were intentional. And clearly, I'll take you to the back and look at what we're doing because we really do, I think, feel a real commitment to firefighters and other first responders to make sure that because you do so much and risk so much to take care of us, that we're taking care of you as well. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you for the
I don't see any other questions for you. I think, you know, when you come after several other people, sometimes the questions are often asked. So thank you for your for telling your story. Though we really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
My name is Kyle Hauser. I am testifying in support of Senate Bill one, forty-one. I represent the 250 members of the Stanford Professional Firefighters Association, and I sit on the Legislative Committee of the Uniformed Professional Firefighters of Connecticut. I'm offering testimony that I hope will further clarify a point that has been touched upon by previous speakers because I think it deserves some extra attention. A question that must be answered, a fair question that I've heard asked is, why is the Cancer Relief Fund not adequate? Well, the root of the problem is the lack of the presumptive cancer coverage through workers' compensation. There is no amount of money that we can put into the Cancer Relief Fund that will help firefighters and their families if their occupational cancer forces them off the job or takes their life. I'm going to repeat that because it's the heart of this bill, I feel. There is no amount of money that we can put into the Cancer Relief Fund that will help firefighters and their families if the occupational cancer forces them off the job or takes their life. A firefighter that has not been on the job long enough to be vested in their employer's pension will currently not receive a disability pension if cancer forces them off the job. Their family will not receive a disability pension if the firefighter loses his or her life to occupation occupational cancer. You see, disability pensions are based upon disability ratings. Connecticut workers' compensation is control of this matrix of disability ratings, and the state doesn't recognize occupational cancer for firefighters in a presumptive manner. No rating, no disability pension. In the case of a firefighter that is not vested, that means no pension at all, as if he never worked for the fire department. It also means no health care for a family of a firefighter who can no longer work as a firefighter or is deceased. You're treated the same as the employee who simply quits the job to go work somewhere else. We are asking that firefighters with occupational cancer be treated the same as firefighters who are injured or killed actively fighting a structured fire. That's all I have. Thank you for your time, and please support SB one, forty-one.
Thank you. And give me, I see there is a hand, so let me. Representative Aurora.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Kyle. I lived in Stanford for over 10 years. So, you know, Stanford is very close to my heart. And Stanford, all essential services, especially the fire service, has to be close to my heart because that's what I relied on while I was living there for so many years. But that doesn't really mean that just Stanford, but I I know you you speak for for all firefighters across Connecticut. And, you know, this is a I really appreciate you clarifying because this is this issue. Obviously, everybody has this bipartisan support to make sure that there is help, but at the same time, it's clouded by the deal done or or the fund which was set up. So I do appreciate you really focusing on it. You know, that was that's a really you know, good thing because we have had so many speakers. We are thinking about just exactly what you said, and I I really appreciate the clarity you you brought into it. So just to, you know, just maybe it's a comment or a question or a caution, really. And so what really this would do, what you're saying is that the fund itself is not effective or doesn't doesn't go enough because if the the outcome is so extreme here, you know, obviously, as you said, that, you know, somebody loses their life or that that much broader set of compensation is needed, which would be which would be so as to say, effectuated by by the workman, by classifying the firefighters as this as a as an event for for disability versus or or line of work event versus just giving it out at the firemen from the fireman funds, from that special fund. Would that be right, or can you speak to that?
Yeah, I can. I I think this will be helpful. To maybe make it more 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 vivid example, right, I can in the case of Stanford, and first, we should say every municipal pension system is a little different, right? But I know in the in the case of Stanford, you know, you'd have to have 15 years to be vested. So if you had a cancer, I'm not even going to use the most extreme case. Let's say you have a cancer that you survive, but perhaps it's autoimmune-based, right? It's blood or something, so you can no longer do do the job. You can't do EMS, right? Because it's a big part of our job. You can't be around sick people because you're vulnerable for the rest of your life. So you have to retire as a firefighter. If it's in the 14th year of your career, you wouldn't get anything because you needed 15 years to be vested. However, if I were to if this person were to fall off a ladder, right, and break their neck and and have to have their neck fused and was forced to retire for that reason, that would come with a rating, right, that we would apply to them, and then they would be able to get the disability pension. And then and it would be worth, you know, a little more, be closer to something that they can live off, you know, even though they didn't have their 15 years. Is that helpful?
Yeah, yeah. So so the rating is what is most important in that determination, as you're telling me. And and in the case of in the case of cancer, because of the fact that it was not directly associated, there is no rating, so as to say, would that be right?
Well, I I wouldn't agree with the directly associated just because we have, you know, we view these, you know, certain types of cancers as directly associated. But but I understand if your if your point is it's not like a specific one event. Yeah, I know what you mean. It's not as simple as if you fell off a ladder trying to get someone out a window. That's a little clearer to to see in the eyes of workers' comp, but it comes down to to the rating. It comes down to workers' comp not recognizing it. So when you go to 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 the Pension Board, you know, in Stanford, and say, I can't work anymore. I'm sick. If you apply for a disability pension, they want to see the paperwork that says, oh, what what rating did you get? You know, because you probably know, maybe others don't know, that different body parts come with different ratings, right? If you were to lose a limb, it would come with a certain percentage or, you know, use the, you know, your your shoulder no longer worked. Those come with with numbers associated.
Well, thank you so much for your service. Really appreciate it, and we are very grateful for it. You know, especially me specifically because of your town, but but we're appreciative of all all fire workers across firefighters across Connecticut. And thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Kyle. That was very helpful and clarified, I think, some of the issues that have been raised. So thank you for being with us tonight.